Kiko, are you there? Kiko?
I am here, yes.
I'm... I don't seem to have an option to join gallery view.
You won't have that option until I stop sharing the screen.
Okay, I think you told me that last time. Thank you. Okay, it's 5:30 and I call the July 30, 2020 Special Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. 5:30 PM. First we'll do roll call. Commissioner Christensen. I see you. Okay, Commissioner Benavides, I see a screen. Are you going to join us by video, Gil? Commissioner Park? I don't see him. Commissioner Seavey?
Present.
Commissioner Gay, don't see him. Commissioner Berenson? Don't see her. Commissioner Eby is here. So, we have four commissioners present and some others may join us, I'm hoping. Tiffany, did you hear from any of the commissioners that they would not be attending this evening?
No, I did not. And we will, I will try and have Kiko let Rachel in right now.
Okay.
Tiffany, you want me to put Commissioner Berenson to panelist?
Yes, please.
And I have Commissioner Benavides on, but we don't have any audio or video for you.
Maybe he should try reconnecting. Commissioner Berenson, we just finished the roll call and I'm going to count you as present now.
Thank you.
So, we'll move on to approval of the agenda and, and hope that we can get Commissioner Benavides and anyone else who's going to join us soon. Director Justice, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda. I have some comments about the discussion that I'll talk about during the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda. And this is Rachel Berenson.
Rachel, can you, can you second the motion because Drew jumped in there before you?
I will second the motion.
Okay, so Commissioner Seavey moved to approve the agenda, Commissioner Berenson seconded. How do you vote? Commissioner Christensen?
Approve.
Commissioner Benavides, is he back? Doesn't look like it. Commissioner Park isn't here. Commissioner Seavey?
Approved.
Commissioner Gay, I see we have with us. Can you hear us, Commissioner Gay? Looks like he's frozen. So, we're, we're voting on a motion to approve the agenda. Would you like to vote, yay or nay? Breaking up. Commissioner Berenson?
Yay.
And Commissioner Eby. So, we have at least four votes to approve the agenda. We didn't have any negative votes. Mr. Gay, can you hear us? Apparently not.
I might recommend if you are on the, the call and having trouble with your audio or video that you can call into the phone number. And if you need that information, you can email me and I can get that information to you. You can email kiko@myitsupport.me. kiko@myitsupport.me And I'll get you the call in information if you need to connect to the audio a different way.
Of course, if they're not hearing us, that might not be very effective. Final Justice, are you trying to contact those two commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a special meeting and I am going to arbitrarily limit the time for the meeting to two hours. And so by 7:30, we're going to stop. And if we haven't completed all the discussion on the items that are in our agenda, we'll put them on the August regular meeting agenda. So, the next item is the public comment period. Residents may address the commission to comment on issues, problems, or successes, and topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. We're also tonight, just because it's a special meeting. If there are any members of the public who want to comment on, on the topics that are in the agenda, please do so now, even though they're on the agenda. So, Kiko, do we have any?
If Joe Craig would like to speak, I can put him on now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Craig, do you? Do you? Do you have any objection to joining by video?
No, that's fine.
It's just, it makes it more real for us if we can see you. But if it's easy to do that. But go ahead and state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, Joe Craig, 505 Caide del Pajarito, North West. Let me unclick the video. There we go.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, you caught me by surprise, Commissioner. I thought we'd comment during the, the...
Well, we're, we're limiting the time for, for that discussion because it's we've, we've been through a marathon for our meeting a couple of weeks ago and so we don't want to have a lot of free flowing discussion during the items. So if you can please comment on whatever of those topics you would like to at this time, we'd appreciate it.
I will, thank you. So, I will restate my name, Joe Craig. I'm probably wearing a couple of hats here. President of the Caide del Pajarito Neighborhood Association, which is affected by the Gateway Center. I'm one of the authors of the 2020 Master Plan where we initially introduced the Gateway Center, which has changed substantially, and former Planning and Zoning Commissioner with you, Commissioner Eby.
Yes.
A lot of other things. But at any rate, Mike, let me get down into that point. The I'm concerned, a couple of things about the Gateway Center. It was designed to look at tying in as a Todd, Transit Oriented Development with the Los Rancho's Journal Center Station. We did not annex that. So, our, our view of the Gateway Center changed dramatically. We have a, a great Steelbender's Economic Development Engine there that came out of that. I'm wearing my Steelbender's t-shirt. Just by coincidence. We don't have a lot of property in there. However, the north Los Rancho's business community is pretty substantial. And it's something that we have really ignored as a community. A lot of businesses, a lot of open, certainly our Del Norte of open space. It is, it is truly a transit oriented development, the Salle Del Norte with the intersection of the Alameda Drain Bike Path and the Del Norte Bike Path. A lot of really pretty cool stuff going on there. I think we need to really look at revisiting the whole Gateway Center. I'm a little dis- I'm, I'm not dismayed, but I'm not quite understanding what the high density verbiage is in the packet for our Gateway Center. We approved it as the, the 2020 Master Plan, Planning and Zoning, and then the trustees approved it for three story only. We had extensive discussion in P&amp;Z regarding high density, higher density, taller six story at our Village Center properties. I don't know where that came from. Adamantly opposed to highs, the multi-story projects. And that's come out in, in all of our discussions in the master planning and in the 2035 master planning about higher density, higher stories. And I think that was a developer driven proposal, and I don't know where it came from, but losing our view sites, our neighborhood associations extremely opposed to it. Now, I'd really be a like to see the village bringing in a urban planning group and looking at what our north business Gateway Center is now, because it's changed dramatically. And I don't think, I think we're, we're ill advised in trying to just put a Band-Aid on what happened in for 2020. Let me, here we go. Let me scroll down and I'll catch up with this on our list. I think that's I'm not getting my packet out here, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. So, by the way, our agenda doesn't come up in the online. It hasn't come up for quite some time. It only goes into a commissioner's packet. And, okay, here we go. Our I, I'm, as another hat, I am a member and Secretary of the Agricultural Committee, which has been a very viable group. I'm not quite sure where the Agricultural Committee extends into the village market. The village market has been well run. We had a, an odd juxtaposition of our market and the village of Los Rancho's. And for years, I think Mayor Abraham insisted that it was a standalone, yet we have a lot of interaction there. I'm not sure that I like the Agricultural Committee having oversight on it. I believe that Fergus and, and Simon and perhaps Maria would be a better village committee oversight for the village market. We desperately need that to promote our, our village marketing and, and the, the emphasis that we have done on agriculture, reintroduction of that, and promotion of our AgroNature Center. And I think that's about all I have as far as comment right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Craig. And you realize that we're not making any decisions tonight, and that's why I've kind of altered the public comment period to include your comments. I didn't know if you were going to be commenting on these items, but the agenda just refers to the packet for the issues. So, if you don't have the agenda, it doesn't say anything about the issues.
Previously, our agenda was printed. It, it won't even come up anymore.
Yeah, I found it there yesterday, but on the website. But thank you for your comments.
Packet comes up.
Thank you for your comments. Very thoughtful and very much appreciated. Do we have any other speakers that have indicated they would like to speak tonight? Kiko?
There are none.
Okay, then we're going to, we don't, we don't have any items on the consent agenda, or we have no public hearings or applications, and we have no old business. So, we're moving on to new business on the agenda, which is discussion of the planning and zoning topics. Again, there will be no action taken on any of these topics for new business. And Tiffany is going to maybe suggest a, a different order for discussing these items than appears in the packet. And as I said, if we don't get to the items that are lower on the list, we're going to defer them until our next meeting. And we're going to discuss the issues one by one, rather than have Tiffany give us all at once. We'll do it one by one like a dentist. Okay, Tiffany, go ahead and give us what your order, your preferred order.
Sure. So, Chair Commissioners, the reason why I'm kind of switching around the order than what is presented is because of this timeframe. I figure if we're, if we're not, if we may not get to all the items tonight, that we get to the more pressing ones sooner and then not defer those until later. So, the first item that I'd like to talk about is the Gateway District Zone. And that's actually the last item in the discussion packet. So, I'll, I'll basically do a little bit of introduction on the, the issue at hand, and then I will stand for any questions. So, with the Gateway District, if you aren't familiar with it, it is one of the smaller zones in the village, GD Gateway District. The original concept for it in the master plan and the 2010 Master Plan, the 2020 Master Plan was that we would annex to the Railrunner Station and have it be a transit oriented development. And with the lack of annexation, it's still it has multi, multiple modes of transportation, just not the Railrunner. And so, this was, this is a zone that is mixed use, residential and commercial, similar to the C1 Zone for commercial and the VC for Village Center. These are all mixed use of commercial and residential zones. And so, what the, what I'd mainly like to point out today is the residential uses, which in the Gateway District Zone, there's one prohibited use of a residential zone, and then also the density allowed for for a amount of dwelling units. So, in, in the packet, it mentions that permissive uses, residential uses are single family residential dwelling units, about 12 to an acre, and multi-residential units about with a max of 12 to an acre. So, with those residential permissive uses, you can have either up to 12 individual houses, or up to 12 houses with shared walls, like townhouses, or a duplex, fourplex type of development. However, we also explicitly say that one of the prohibited uses in the Gateway District Zone is apartment buildings or other dwelling units designed primarily as rental units. So, that language there not only prevents apartment buildings, which is interesting because right between El Pueblo and the Salle Del Norte is two apartment complexes that were annexed in before it, this was the Gateway District. But the other dwelling units designed primarily as rental units encompasses anything that is really a rental. So, even if you are designing a single family house, if it's a rental unit, it is prohibited in this case. So, it's oddly restrictive for this zone. There's no other zone in the village, including multifamily or mixed use, that prohibits something like this. And so, I'm kind of hoping that we can change that language a little bit to be less restrictive. So, for comparison, apartments are a conditional use and are allowed in the C1 Zone, and the Village Center Zone doesn't refer to apartments at all. They just say they don't, they don't reference apartments, multifamily, or multi-residential units. And these are all the definitions that we use for multifamily. And so, it's just a little bit of a puzzle why this was written the way it is. I, it would be understandable if this was a transition zone between a higher density commercial to lower density residential, why you would want to restrict certain kinds of residential developments. But between Fourth and Second Street is mostly commercial, some residential, and Second Street is pretty industrial. So, it's, it's, it's not in that transition zone. And then, so the main question is that would the commission recommend a change removing this prohibited use or amending it in some way? There's also the matter of the dwelling unit density for this zone. There's a density maximum here of 12 dwelling units per acre, whether they're a single family or multifamily. And so, this, this is less than what the Village Center and the C1 Zones have for their maximums, which is 24 dwelling units and 20 dwelling units. So, there seems to be an indication of this being some kind of transition zone between commercial and residential. But again, it's residential, industrial, commercial, all of that area. And what this inadvertently does is limits the amount, or it encourages larger, larger dwelling units rather than more smaller ones. Because if you can only fit 12, why not fit the largest square footage you can for each of those units, rather than than smaller square footage with more units? So, and would the commission recommend a change to amend that? And what would be an appropriate number of dwelling units? I'm looking for recommendations at this point, opinions, feasibility about some of these topics, and any questions you may have. So, if, if we get to a topic like this one or any of the others that you can't really have an opinion on, unless you get some answers to some questions, I'm all ears.
Thank you, Tiffany. And I just want to clarify that any change we recommend would require an amendment to the ordinance. Is that right?
Yes.
It's not just a matter of interpretation, it's?
Yes. So, I'm hoping that the commission can help staff with interpretation of the code as it currently is. And also, any suggestions moving forward as to whether or not the code would need to be changed or not. Again, there's no real vote here, and we would take your thoughts into consideration, but they may not necessarily be fulfilled.
And then you're going to bring this to the Board of Trustees?
Yes. So, this, this is both an aid for staff and also, as some of these issues are more policy oriented, before the board can really make a decision, we're going to be bringing up both the staff perspective and also some public perspective.
Okay, thank you. So, I'd like to throw the floor open to comments and questions. Yes, Commissioner Christensen?
And this is just a general question, Tiffany, and I apologize that I don't know the process. So, what could be the process for ordinance or a code change?
So, depending on how major or minor that amendment to the code would be, there would likely be a public input process if you're developing an entirely new ordinance. If it's something like a technical change where we like, where we would change If it's something like a technical change, where we like, where we would change an and to an or, or something like that, those are likely to go before the Board without public input, like in terms, when I say that, like a, like a public input meeting series, similar to what we've done with the short-term rentals. And so, then it would go before the Board, and it would actually go before them for several meetings. First one, we have to advertise that there'd be a possible change. Then, if, the Board would vote, and then there would also be a public notice period before it would actually be adopted.
Right. So, anything like, if we're changing the, the dwelling unit, the density number, that would go through the process you just described?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? Questions, comments, opinions? Commissioner Benavides?
Yeah, first of all, sorry for having so much difficulty connecting. I had, the same thing happened last time, I just keep trying over and over again, and finally, I get it, but anyway.
Tonight, we don't have a windstorm.
I can't blame it on anything, except, except my ignorance. But anyhow, what I would say, there's a couple of comments. So, you say we're more restrictive on the Gateway Zone than we are on the commercial zone. That, that is partially true, but in the commercial zone, I think there is a minimum as well as a maximum, right? So, in the Gateway Zone, we're, we're talking about a maximum of 12, right? Where the commercial is 12 to 20. So, it doesn't have that constraint on it, okay? And the other comment is, to me, if it looks like an apartment building, whether it's rented or owned, it's, it's an apartment building to me, you know, it still looks that. So, it, it's, I, I think what's important is how it looks, and, and not so important whether it's rented or owned. 12 units per acre, I, I think that's fine, I, I don't know why, if you go to 20, then this looks like an apartment building. You know, if you do 12, then you have, you can give people, you know, a little bit of a yard, courtyard, or something like that, and I think, I think that is more in line with our, the village vision of, of looking like the valley, you know, looking like the Village of Los Rancho, so that, there's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to chime in here? Commissioner Seavey?
Yeah, so, this, this zone is placed, or is located near the Los Rancho's rail runner station. We weren't able to annex it, but it's still there. So, the original intent is a transit-oriented development. I still think holds water, even though we're crossing a jurisdictional boundary for folks to use that amenity. So, I, I am in favor of, you know, opening this up a little bit. I do like what Commissioner Benavides said about the, the outside appearance. You know, I think some kind of form-based code to, to kind of keep this area succinct would be really good. And my other comment would be, I don't, I'm not as familiar, I would need to look, but the Florida area ratio for the Gateway District, that's another thing we could use to protect the character of the area. And I think the 12 units per acre is, seems reasonable. I'd have to think about that a little bit more, but yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Christensen?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Benavides regarding, I think, really great idea, the 12 units, how it looks from the exterior, whether they're apartments, townhouses, or whatever. But I like the 12, keeping the 12-unit idea, having some open space and courtyard. I think that's in keeping with the village. I agree with your comments.
I saw Commissioner Gay had, had joined us by phone, and, but now we just have his frozen video screen. Commissioner Gay, are you there? Commissioner Gay? Do you want to try unmuting and see if you can, if you have something to say, if it will come through?
Yeah, I just did try unmuting, can you hear me on the phone?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I listened to it from the start, I had the same problem I had a couple of weeks ago. This is not, we're not asked to vote on, we're not asked to even consider architectural review committees, we're asked to consider changing the code for the zone. So, to get off on how things look, I don't, I don't believe that's even on the table here. I don't know, anybody could define what, if 12 units per acre looks good or doesn't look good. Oh, I think we should, you know, stick to the, stick to the topic here, which is, do we want to change the code? Not the architectural review committee. I don't know that I'm in, I'm neither in favor or not in favor of it, I think it's a, I can see that it is a little bit arbitrary, and I understand why Tiffany would put this up for some review. I also think it's not something you could just answer in one, two-hour meeting. I think it deserves a little more review into conformity from one end of the village to the, to the next. So, I would not be in favor of proposing anything at this point in this, in this meeting tonight. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, I, we heard your whole statement. It was a little garbled for a minute, but much better than last time.
Just the good part.
So, I, I've been hearing people discuss the density issue, but nobody has addressed, to me, the, the more pressing issue, which is, you know, why is there a prohibition against rentals of any kind in this, in this Gateway District? To me, that makes no sense. And, you know, I, I actually favor the higher density, because I think it will encourage more commercial development, and, you know, more customers at the Steel Bender Brewery, and more people walking to the train station. But, you know, the, the rental part of it, I'd like to hear some of your comments on that, if you have any. Commissioner Benavides has his hand up.
So, I, I think I, I said this, I don't care if it's rented or owned. What, what I care about is how, how it looks. And one of the ways that you can control how it looks is if you control the density. So, I don't, I don't like the look of a big, massive apartment building in the, in the Village of Los Rancho's, a new one. And, and so, I think 12 units per acre is pretty dense, but yet, if, if you limit it to 12, and it could be rented or owned, I'm not, right now, we're not talking about architectural things, but we are talking about the foundation of making something more attractive. So, that, I, I'm, I'm sort of repeating what I said before. Thank you.
So, are, are you okay with a prohibition against any rentals? Of any units, or? Maybe Commissioner Christensen might have something to say.
My question was, and we don't have to go into this, but what, what was the history, the history of why they prohibited in the first place rentals in this area? I mean, I'm just curious, I, why was the thinking at that point in time, there was a reason why? Do we know the reason or the history why? Just curious.
So, Commissioner Christensen, Commissioners, I'm not exactly familiar with why there is a prohibition on apartments and other buildings designed as rentals. But what I, what I can say is, just when I look at the code, there seems to be, at least in this case, there was supposed to be a prohibition on apartment buildings only. But with the extra language of, or other dwelling units designed primarily as rental units, that encompasses any kind of dwelling that's used as a rental. And so, kind of my reasoning for that is that there's two definitions of multi-wellings. There's one that's multifamily, and there's one that's multi-residential. Multi-residential isn't referred to in other sections of the code, it's only mentioned in the Gateway District. And it specifically mentions that they don't include apartment developments, but they do include condos or townhomes. So, I think that like, is extrapolated, but in such a way that is more, it, it, it's more contradictory with what is also a permissive use.
Anyone else like to comment, question? And if not, I'll ask Tiffany to move on to the next item on the preferred order.
Commissioner Eby?
Yes, Commissioner Gay.
I would just maybe ask Tiffany if she could formulate her recommendation from what she sees from her end, not necessarily for us to, to adopt or, or vote on, but just to, to put all of these, all of the, the issues which she's pointed out into a statement, paragraph, or just something that we could kind of look at, what's the, you know, what, what would be a reasonable adoption of code that would make, make it less arbitrary, and so just, I think Tiffany, if you could do something like that, just give us your, your opinion, maybe, if that might be a little dangerous for you, but give us your opinion of what you think might be a good, good solution, and a fair, fair treatment of all the, the zones, and a fair treatment of rentals versus, you know, non-rentals, or. I think what, what I like is that we don't have a lot of different arbitrary rules on one end of the village to the next, and that sounds like it's part of the core of this problem, is that we have, we don't even know how we got this code, you know, how it just grew into what it is. So, let's, let's just figure out a way to make it a fair interpretation going forward. I think there's a lot of, lot of things here that are on the table, a lot of ideas that are on the table, and some are, you know, everybody seems to have a little different opinion of what it is, but again, Tiffany, if you could put something together, I would like to see your interpretation of it, and your idea of a solution.
You know, I think that's a good question, I, I think that maybe it's premature to ask her to do it tonight.
No, yeah.
I think she's just trying to get us our various opinions and, and things, but Ms. Justice, if you'd like to respond to that, go ahead, and if you'd like to put it off, I, I know you're planning to do that with the Board, you give them, you usually give us a recommendation, but this is kind of a different format here. So, what do you say?
Right, so, so, since this is like a discussion meeting, I didn't prepare any recommendations, because there's no action being taken. And so, kind of, as a, as a reversal of what we normally do, this meeting was kind of me asking for your all's recommendation moving forward on things like this. I can definitely provide more context for these issues. For example, the Gateway District, I can, I can look up a little bit more about when that was adopted, and if there was anything definitive on that language. But I, yes, this is, this is mostly for discussion purposes tonight, and yours all's recommendations.
Okay, Tiffany, were you looking for our final recommendations tonight? Was that your intent? Because I did not, I did not study that, this issue in that depth to, to be able to give a very good recommendation on it. I thought it was more of an open discussion, and then we would, we would regroup at some point. I don't, doesn't seem, doesn't seem like any, anything given tonight would be a, you know, very well-thought-out solution.
Right, and, and part of, so, so the purpose for tonight's discussion is to get your thoughts, and any questions you may have on these topics, to again, talk about them in the future. We are, we are definitely not assuming that something is going to be handled in, in this meeting, where we decide on a concrete course of action. And really, the purpose of this meeting is not for that, there, there shouldn't be any decision at this point. So, kind of how we have been handling this, with just Commissioners voicing their questions and their thoughts about the topics, that's kind of what I was going for, so continue this process, and then we can continue discussing these topics at future meetings. That would be the ideal scenario.
Okay, Commissioner Gary, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's, I think she's saying the same thing that I'm thinking. So.
Mr. Christensen have something to add?
Well, I just have more questions. If I'm, if it's too much, or I'm going off point, you guys just tell me. Um, so, these, these apart, the, the two apartment houses down there were annexed in, into the village, into the Gateway District, is that understanding?
No, they were actually annexed in before the Gateway District exists.
Okay. And so, when we were writing up this code, this code with prohibitive use and, and no rentals, or, or things like that, is it an outcome from those, those buildings?
It may have been, I can, into the minutes.
The context and the history, so we can understand maybe where, how this code came up. I mean, it wasn't arbitrarily. If they came in after, why was this wording used at that point in time? That's what I, I just want to understand, if I have to make any decision or any recommendations, I need to have more information of why this, the, the code was written as it was. What was happening at the time that people didn't want rentals or something there? I want to understand the context better, because I don't feel that I can give any recommendations one way or another, because I, I don't, I don't feel like in, in a, in a lot of, have the full context to even make a recommendation or a decision on anything. And that's because I'm an anal auditor, so I, sorry.
Mr. Benavides?
So, I, I, I agree with Karen, I, I think what she says is smart. There's, it's possible that we're missing something, and so, we should investigate how this came about, and, and just to make sure that we're not overlooking something that was important.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, one, one more thing. Yeah, and the 2035 Master Plan-
Yeah. In the 2035 Master Plan under Village Form Goal, Policy B, we have a, a line that says, um, let's see, enhance and unify the commercial aspects of Fourth Street, Village Center and the Gateway District. And then when we look at the definitions of commercial use in the Code of Ordinances, that does include, and, and this is where I'm not totally sure. Would that include the rental of, it does say the renting of rooms under the definitions of commercial use. So we might be obliged to support that.
Thank you for that comment.
And then I just, I think there's a, I see a one under questions and answers. And I just don't know if we're supposed to do something with that, y'all. I haven't even read it, but I just saw it. So I don't know what the process or procedures.
It's, I, I've looked at.
I can, I can respond to that, commissioners. So when, when there are changes to the agenda, we're, we're able to, I guess, venture from what we had put up prior to the meeting. So for example, if there are items that were supposed to be on the agenda, but they were deferred at the last minute and that we aren't able to post that, there will be changes made during the meeting itself.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the next issue. Tiffany, what do you want to bring up next?
Uh, so the next one is a bit more vague than the Gateway District zone. This one is, uh, I understand if it's too theoretical to really voice any opinions or thoughts on. And if it is that all we really end up with is just more questions, that's perfectly fine because really just asking the right questions is, I think, the best way to move forward. So it is agriculture and agricultural commercial. And there's a few components to this question, to this topic. The first is, I guess, the difference between those agricultural activities allowed in the A1, A2, A3 zones that are agricultural residential and the AC zone, which is agricultural commercial. And for context, only one property in Los Ranchos is zoned AC, and that is Casa Rodenya Winery. So both of these zones seem to have very similar uses. So the A1 zone allows plain sale of agricultural products and agricultural activities. So if somebody wants to sell eggs that their chickens laid, they're welcome to do that according to our code in, in a residential zone. In the AC zone, we say that that, that those uses are allowed. And in addition, we specifically allow another, another use, which is commercial activities associated directly and exclusively with agricultural activities. So not only is display and sale and agricultural activities allowed in the residential zone, but we specifically say that commercial activities are all, are allowed specifically in the AC zone. So that real question is, is what is the difference between commercial activities and what's already allowed in the residential zone, which is to some extent, commercial, sale of a product is, is a commercial exchange. And so that's, that's how the first one, we can, we can talk about that. Don't dive into the others. That's all right. Or I can talk about the others as well.
Any other questions on this topic?
Uh, yes, the other, the other questions on this topic.
Yeah, go ahead and discuss and just give us a preview of the whole topic.
Sure. So commissioners, the, the next item is processing and agriculture. So we, we define processing in our code. And we also define in, under agricultural accessory uses for packing, treating, restoring, which are possibly different than processing, but not explicitly said as different. And so the main, the main question there is, is similar to the ag-residential and ag-commercial question is, at what point does this become processing? And something that is, is no longer under, allowed under agriculture? And it's something that would likely be commercial in this case. And so, so that's really the context for that one. It's, it's a little difficult to talk about because when we talk about, when we think about the different types of crops and animals and agricultural activity that can happen on a property, it's difficult to draw a line between packing, treating and storing and more possibly commercial processing for all of those potential activities at the same time. So for example, I guess, if, if somebody were to be growing and then bailing and shipping off their alfalfa, that is something that is packing, treating and storing that is allowed on the property. And that possibly is not processing. But at what point would it become processing? If you're growing herbs and you crush them, would, would that be processing versus packing, treating, restoring?
Well, when I look at the definition to treat, it says to act upon with some agent to improve or alter. To me, that's not the same as packing. Somebody taking their egg, it's laid from their chicken and they put it in a carton. That's totally different. That is, to me, is to pack. To treat is when you're taking something and like they say, some agent to improve or alternate. Taking, I'm just going to throw this out, the marijuana plant and changing it into CBD or hemp or something like that. That to me is you're treating it with an agent to improve or alter the original crop. Somebody taking an egg and putting it in a container isn't treating. To me, it's just packing. So, I mean, I was just looking at the definitions that you gave us from the dictionary. So, and you're saying in the code, it's all not.
So the reason why I included those definitions from the dictionary is because those definitions aren't in our code. So when those definitions are absent in the code, we usually turn to whatever is the common definition in the dictionary. And as I guess, a question for that is, what is considered another agent? If you're, if you're growing cows and you chop the beef and you dry it and you salt it to turn it into jerky, is the salt itself an agent that is, is treating it?
Or is it to process?
Tiffany, can you tell us how, why this came up? Why is this an issue now? What, what's the basis of these questions?
So Commissioner Berenson, commissioners, this topic, I, I think has come up as we change the way that we are really growing, I think lately, and growing agriculture. So there's a history in the village of a lot of open alfalfa fields. And a lot of agriculture was kind of mostly alfalfa. But as we've been really supporting agriculture, we have an agricultural program manager. We're really working on the AgriNature Center. More, less traditional forms of agriculture are coming up and less traditional crops or animals. So it's, it's, I guess, a question more for how we plan on growing with agriculture, I suppose. Because we, we, we talk a lot about in the master plan and with our ag activities about really supporting agriculture and really wanting to encourage agriculture. But at the core, a lot of what agriculture is, is commercial. And we do have separate zones for ag-residential and ag-commercial. So I guess at what point is what somebody's doing on their property too commercial for a residential zone? And where we would say, hey, you can't do this in this zone. You need to do something in the AC zone, need to apply for a zone change. So like, like with Casa Rodenya Winery, we explicitly say wineries are permissive use in the AC zone. So if somebody wanted a winery, they would need to change the AC zone. But there are other things like, I guess, if I'm making jam, that kind of thing. How, how big does my production have to get before I'm considered a commercial operation? And too, and too commercial for a residential area?
Commissioner Benavides, you had a question or a comment?
Comment. I think the operative word is processing. If, if you're root, as, as it's picked, there's not a process involved. If you, if, if you grow alfalfa and you bail it, you can argue package, bailing is a process. But we're going to say, we're, we're going to excuse packaging as a process. So, so if you make jam, that's, that's a process. If I get grapes and I turn it into juice, that's a process. I, I, I can't sell juice at the, at the growers market. I sell grapes, but I can't sell juice without a special license. So to, to me, I, I, I think it's, it's not that difficult to make the distinction. What, the, the open question I have in my mind is if you're zoned AC, and we only have one example of that, there's an implication, you're going to get a lot more customers coming in and out, right? And maybe that's, you know, that's one reason why we have that special zone. I don't know. But I, it's all about the process. And to me, it's not that hard to make a distinction. That's it.
Commissioner Gay? I thought you might have some thoughts on this.
I am still waiting for the explanation of Commissioner Berenson's question. Where did it come from? And I understand the, the logic behind it. And I don't disagree with it, but it seems that we're getting a little bit too bureaucratic on some of these concepts. That I'm not sure we even need to change anything about it. So I'd like to know where, Tiffany, where do you think this logic comes in? And where do you think it could be applied? In, not, not just in going forward with describing agricultural zones, but you know, the real day-to-day life in the village. Is, is this a problem or are we just making it a problem? I'm a little uncertain.
So it's, it's not a problem right now. What the, I guess, we're kind of, we're, we're thinking a little preemptively talking about, I guess, to name an example, the AgriNature Center. So we, it's, it's two lots. One has a special use for a winery. It's, it's allowed to basically be a processing facility. But outside of that, it is zoned A1, just like every other residential property in the village, really. Or a lot of them at least. So we have grander visions for, for the AgriNature Center than what is currently happening to have it be a resource for farmers in the area especially. And that, this was something that was also talked about in the master plan, which was providing shared resources. So say you, you do grow grapes, but you don't have the capability of processing it into a juice. Or well, frankly, a winery would have to, just, they would have to have a separate zone change. And basically providing that kind of facility for people to do. But we could, you wouldn't be able to necessarily do that everywhere at the AgriNature Center, only where it's currently zoned. And so it's a, it's a question both for just residential zoning in general and for the AgriNature Center because it's also zoned residential. Especially since we're, we're hoping that it can be a focal point where residents don't have to provide this stuff on their own. But if, if they can't do it, we, we also can't do it.
Okay. Yeah, I can understand that.
Mr. Benavides?
So maybe I misunderstood what Tiffany was saying. Director Justice, are you saying that, that there is an interest in, in, in using the agricultural, turning the agricultural center into, into an AC zone? So that processing could be done there?
No. That, that is not what, what I'm saying. Actually, right now, part of the property is zoned special use for a winery. So it can be used as a processing facility of some kind for an agricultural use. And I'm not suggesting that the AgriNature Center become an AC zone because then that would imply that it's a commercial business. And, and it's not at this point. And I don't think that's the intent of the village to do that. But it is, it is a question of if we wanted to do stuff, would we be required then to have it be the AC zone? Or really any, any residential property? If you're an avid farmer, at, at what point do your operations become too commercial? And I think, I think Commissioner Benavides did bring up a good point about that it seems like the difference is customers coming and going on site, less so the agriculture component of it, but more the retail front. Is, is that, I guess, am I correct in that interpretation?
Yeah. Well, let me just say for one final thing. If the, I, I wouldn't object to the agricultural center becoming zone AC. I mean, that's a, that's a separate topic, but I'm not saying that I have a problem with that if, if that appears to be a problem.
And right now, it's special use, SU1, right?
Yes. So part of the property is zoned SU1 and part of the property is zoned A1.
Yeah, it looks like it's surrounded by A1 and there's a little island of special use. For me, the processing, I think, I think the village has its work cut out for itself in terms of identifying different forms of products that can be grown and what the normal processes are. It, it can vary so much. And I don't know if applying blanket terminology is going to be very helpful. It's, it's more considering, is it a nuisance to others? And, you know, what does that mean? You know, if you're growing a crop to get CBD, you know, you might really be stinking out your neighbors. Or, you know, if you have a ton of cattle on one property. You know, it, it just, it seems like a, more of an off-site impact question to me. That, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebby. Anyone else? Okay. For me, this was a little too abstract. I, I need more of a concrete issue to have an opinion. I, I have no opinion. So can we move on then to the next item on the list? Tiffany, what do you want to bring up next?
Sure. So the next topic is the growers market and arts market. So I have, I have a little bit more context than what So I have, I have a little bit more context than what I had written down. Just with some more information about the current state of the growers market, but before everything, I guess I'd, I'd like to just preface this with that we I, I'm aware that this is not really a planning and zoning topic. The growers market is an event that happens. It's an organization that residents take a part of, they either as sellers or as buyers or both. So this is, this is kind of the opposite of the gateway district zone where we were talking about specifically about the code. This does not have any real place in the code. And it's not really planning and zoning. But at, at this point, it is something that I think is worth discussing. Just the current status of the growers market and kind of hopefully moving forward with it. There's a new administration, so there's new opportunities to, to look at this. And if it also, if it works and and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. That, that also works. So just, I wanted to preface that before getting into it. And so just some more context with, with what's included. Growers market is something that was approved by, by the board back in 1992. And, and I didn't include that in this. And that they are more than just seasonal, they operate technically annually. Well, every Saturday in the warmer months and then in the cooler months, once a month. So basically there's, what's, what's interesting is, I, I guess, just the relationship between the ag committee and the growers market and the village. Because the ag committee, as I mentioned for the last topic, is ag is a serious business in the village and the ag committee has been going strong for years and is something that was passed by resolution back in 2000. But they also were passed with the 2010 master plan goal to sponsor the growers market among, among some other goals. And recently, Fergus, who is our ag program manager, has been working with the ag committee to restructure it. There's been a lot of focus on the aligning our Agri-Future initiative, which is a collaboration with New Mexico State University. And other ag entities, people, those who are just interested in the region to kind of connect and collaborate. So the ag committee itself has changed. And so that's, that's part of the reason why we're, we're bringing up these questions. And just how, how to move forward with the growers market. Again, this is something that is not really planning or zoning. So just your thoughts or any questions, I'm, I'm all ears.
Thank you, Tiffany. And I think Mr. Craig said that he, he's now on the ag committee as a member. So again, thank you for your comments previously. Anyone wish to give comments or ask questions on this topic?
Chairwoman Eby?
Yes, Commissioner Gay.
I have a question. And Tiffany, who does Fergus report to in the village and who who is currently the agricultural? Well, the AgriNature Center, who is in charge of that program? Is it you or is it the Senator Simon?
So, so Commissioner Gay, commissioners, that is, that Fergus reports to Administrator Simon. And for the, so the, the AgriNature Center is kind of Fergus's home ground there. And he works with the ag committee. I, I'm not exactly sure if it's staff aiding the committee or if it's, or kind of how they collaborate. But that's, that's how that, that structure works.
Technically, he's not part of the planning and zoning department.
No, he is in his own department for agricultural programs.
Then I'd say we just let whoever's in charge of that program figure it out.
Any other comments?
I will say one more thing, if that's okay.
Commissioner Seavey, sure.
Yeah, I keep falling back on the master plan and it's kind of what we should be doing.
That's our basis.
Yeah. And I just did a quick search for growers market. It's everywhere in the document and it's our village's identity. I know we can't really sway it as commissioners, but you know, just in my personal opinion, it should be fully supported in any way we possibly can. You know, policy C in the agriculture section, support and promote agricultural events and programs held in or by the village. Including but not limited to, and the first item is growers market, and it continues through kind of a nice list of other agricultural programs. So yeah, it, it should, yeah, it, it, it's a no-brainer for me.
I agree with that too. Commissioner Berenson?
I, I do. I agree that we need to definitely support the growers market. With, of course, the caveat that people are being COVID-protecting if, in the growers market. I, I just think that that's an important note to bring up, and I'm not sure if that's being pursued or not.
I'm, I'm a frequent visitor to the growers market and they do have mask requirements and they've even instituted a one-way path. So you enter and you go around kind of in a circle to, you know, to limit interactions and running into people and clumps. So. Yes, Commissioner Benavides?
So this question is, is to Director Justice, but actually Drew might be capable of answering as well. Hey, so does, does the agricultural committee have articles to that, that outline how they operate?
So Commissioner Benavides, commissioners, as far as I'm aware, they do not. However, that is something that I will really need to double check first with the ag committee and with Fergus before answering on.
That would be my recommendation, that they come up with articles so that, that shows, that tells them how, how to operate and govern themselves.
Any other comments? What about the issue of the question that Tiffany poses? Should the ag committee continue to sponsor the growers market? And what, what does that mean? You know, does that mean financial support, insurance? Et cetera? They always have ads in the, in the monthly village magazine. I don't know who's paying for that now, but should they get free advertising if they're not already? I, I kind of think they should. It's kind of like a PSA, a public service announcement, you know, the growers market is. But I don't know what sponsorship means. You know, I, I looked at the document. It was a resolution that was passed under Mayor Hooker back in the nine, in the nineties. That established the ag committee and Sue Brawley was the chair back then, and she, she's probably still the chair or I see her there every week. She's an active participant seller and organizer. So any comments? Tiffany, do you want to draw out any more questions for us to give you guidance on?
Not really. I, I think there was some pretty vocal support of the growers market. And and some questions that I can look into at this point, so that this has been helpful. Especially considering it's not planning or zoning. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I had the same kind of question, you know, is the growers market an entity? Is it? Is it a thing? And I think it was Commissioner Benavides asked, does it have articles of incorporation? Do they have a budget? You know, I think they, they might have a budget because they charge for the booths and so maybe that there should be a little more oversight.
I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, we're doing pretty well here. It's quarter of seven. Let's move on to the next topic. Who do you want to take up next, Tiffany?
Now, now we're just kind of going backwards of the document. So food trucks in residential areas.
Okay.
So to provide some context for that, up until about March or April, we actually didn't have a permit for food trucks. So we, we have several different types of business licenses. We have home occupations that occur inside of somebody's house. Like if somebody's running an online business out of their office, they get a home occupation license. We also have commercial business licenses for businesses and commercial zones. Those are only issued to people in, I guess, for, those are only issued to businesses that aren't home occupations, I guess, so to speak. So and most of them, of course, are along Fourth Street. And we didn't really have a permit for food trucks, because we require that you have an address. And kind of more permanent accommodations than a food truck, which could be at multiple locations on the same street, on, on same day or different days. And we have a vendor permit for event-type vendors. So if a food truck is at an event, they can get a one-day vendor permit. But in terms of daily activity, there was really nothing. So we, Jennifer, our P&amp;Z coordinator, put together a food truck application that kind of supplements the commercial business license. And we ask all the questions that we need to know for, for a food truck, like where is your commissary, the health and safety questions? Do you have written permission from the property owner to be there? And what days of the week you're allowed to be there? So we recently started issuing those. But we, we really only issue, we limit them to commercial zoning. Similar to commercial business licenses. So one specific case, two specific cases, to kind of be more concrete examples, are Hartnett Park and Edgewood Park. So both of those are parks in the village. And Hartnett Park is the underlying zoning is residential. And so we wouldn't, so if, if they want to have a business at that location, that isn't part of an event, of an event like the growers market, it needs a home occupation license, which could not be issued in a place that doesn't have a home. Versus Edgewood Park, the underlying zoning is Village Center, which is commercial. So a food truck could park there. And be compliant with, with the zoning. And so I guess the, the question itself is a bit broader, just food trucks in residential areas. This question could be broken down to should the village allow food trucks at its parks? Versus should the village allow food trucks in residential zones? But that's kind of the origin of where this question. Specifically looking at parks.
Drew, what does the master plan say about this?
I didn't look that one up. I should, well.
But I, I, you know, I, it's an interesting concept. It's kind of new and upcoming, or not new, but I mean, like if you go to San Antonio, they have these commercial districts where they're just multiple food trucks. But then you go to other areas of like, say Albuquerque. And you'll see food trucks here and there. Sometimes even on, on residential properties, like just hanging out, selling something. But I don't, I, I think we have to look at the master plan to see what the master plan says about commercial business in residential areas.
Anyone else, Commissioner Benavides?
Well, let me, let me comment about what, what, what I think is the easy stuff first. And with, without knowing what's in the master plan, I'll just tell you what, how I feel about it. I, I am not a fan of food trucks in the resident, in the interior of the residential areas of the Villagelos Rancho's. There, there could potentially be some isolated areas where that might make sense. I can't think of anything right now. Certainly Hartnett Park might make sense. You know, we, we talk about doing something with a barn. And, you know, having a food truck with events at the barn might make a lot of sense. And, you know, food trucks, perhaps in the commercial district, I, I don't know how the, the restaurants feel about it. That might make sense, but, but I, you know, I live on Guadalupe Trail and I just don't think I'd like to see food trucks driving down Guadalupe Trail.
You got something to add?
What did you find for us?
Oh, I did, I did do a search. The word food truck occurs once in the entire document and it's under recommendations and ideas under the economic development section, and it's tagged under tourism. I, I think it was like a public comment thing. There's no real language. But for me, I, as a landscape architect, this is a health, safety and welfare issue. We have a lot of narrow, kind of no-shoulder streets. And if a food truck could just park wherever they liked in a residential area, you have people crossing the street, you have, you know, you're creating kind of an attractive nuisance. But where, where there's enough space to make it work, I think it's a great idea, especially in the parks. I just drove past Hartnett Park today and, you know, it's just so much space and so much unplanted space, just bare dirt. You know, and I know it's zoned A1, but yeah, it's a great opportunity. But yeah, echoing what Commissioner Benavides said, right in the neighborhoods, it, it could be hazardous.
Commissioner Christensen has her hand up. Go ahead. You're muted.
I'm gonna, I agree totally with Drew and, and Gil. I think in the parks, the food trucks are awesome and, and regarding an area where they can meet, like when you, when you do go visit other areas, there's places where food trucks, and I'm just thrown without the gate, you know, the gateway area where there's transit and stuff, there's maybe pudding. Where we have people coming in and out, food trucks or, or things like that. But a designated area, I don't agree with them in residential areas at all. But in the parks, I think that's a great idea. And even along, and I, Gil, I get what you're saying about the restaurants along Fourth Street, but you know, in the commercial areas, but not in residential areas.
Commissioner Gay, it looks like you're thinking deep in thought.
I'm speechless.
Okay. I'm a big fan of, of food trucks. I actually organized the food trucks for the Albuquerque Folk Festival for the first two years that they had them. And but, you know, I, I can see there's trade-offs with having them in residential zones. And I, I can also see that restaurant owners might be opposed to having them in some areas that, you know, would compete with them. You know, we're in a, we're in a real strange time now where restaurants are restricted on seating. And they're having to seat And they're having to seat customers outdoors. A lot of them have put up umbrellas and, you know, tents and things to accommodate that. And, you know, I can see them being upset about food trucks moving in en masse. I don't think that's going to happen, but, but on the other hand, you know, in this economy, a food truck might be a viable way for a family to, to keep going. They're all locally owned, you know, small, small businesses, micro-businesses. So I see pros and cons. And I remember seeing a food truck up on Rio Grande. It was on the west side of the road, up near El Pueblo or, I, I used to pass it on my bike coming back. And I guess that was an unpermitted truck and that they've shut them down. And, you know, something like that. But I was kind of attracted to, to it, to see it there. But I could see that it was probably a bit of a hazard for traffic. Traffic, traffic is, was way down when they set up, you know? It was early in the COVID restrictions. People weren't driving as much, but, so. Yeah, I like the idea of having them in the parks and for special events. And even, you know, permanent might be appropriate in some cases. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Benavides?
Just one more quick thing. Something to consider. So presently, if you're, you have a wedding in your yard, if you have a big yard, you might have quite a few guests.
Yeah.
And you, you might, your yard, you could potentially park everyone in your yard, you know? So what if, what if you wanted to have a food truck at your wedding, you know, for your child or something like that? Is, you know, there might be special cases where it does make sense. That's all.
And actually, Commissioner Benavides, commissioners, we do have a special event permit for, for stuff that happens on residential properties that's a bit larger scale. So, so if it is like a several hundred-person event and there's food trucks lined up and all that, that kind of thing, we do issue a special event permit and we would require those vendors to get a vendor permit if they don't already have a business license in Los Ranchos.
Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Seavey?
Yeah, um, so I worked a little bit on the Alameda Drain Trail, the first phase of that. And that has its own master plan. And there's a provision in there for food truck courts. And it's, it's really just kind of a one-way pull-over from a main street that's adjacent to a trail. And I can't really think of a place in the village right now where that would work. But it's just interesting to think that, you know, an entire design can go into places where these trucks could pull over, not just a park or, or an impromptu street corner, but, you know, actual facilities, just at that.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Gay, you're still speechless?
I am.
Okay, let's move on then to the next topic. Tiffany, what would you like to take up as our fifth? Is this the last topic? Do we just have five? You're muted.
We have one more. It's assisted living facilities in residential areas. So the, the context for this one is that we, we actually, we had, we've had a resident ask a couple of times about how exactly they would do something like this. And the concept is that you take an existing house and you basically turn it into an assisted living facility where a nurse lives there and several patients. The, it, it is not the same thing as an assisted living facility that is designed to be an assisted living facility that you tend to see in other parts of town. This is taking a house and I guess retrofitting it to become a business. So in this case, an assisted living facility, the entire facility itself is a business. Because it's, it, it is basically. You have a nurse who's on-site, you have patients. And it does not meet the criteria of a home occupation. Even if nobody left the house and it was just interior, we limit the home occupation to 500 square feet inside a house. So as the whole house would be the business, that still would not qualify. But, but the purpose of an assisted living facility is to provide long-term housing for people. And we do offer in-home care permits for folks who do own their home to have a nurse in their home or a separate unit for their nurse, which is also separate from the guest house. So you could have a separate unit for your nurse if you needed it. But with multiple patients and one nurse, that's too big of an operation to exist. And so we, we wouldn't really be able to permit this. So, and, and it wouldn't qualify as a variance because there's no real hardship identified because there's still use of the property that could be done that isn't an assisted living facility. It could be used as a single-family residential. And there is the option of a special use permit. But this specifically says that the proposed use is not provided for in any other zone. And assisted living facilities are provided in other zones. They are conditional uses in the Village Center Gateway District and the commercial zones. So that's, that's the question is would the village or would the commission, what do you guys think about a home-scale assisted living facility?
Okay, thank you. And I, I just want to acknowledge that Commissioner Park has joined us.
Sorry I'm late. I was on another Zoom call that took 90 minutes longer than it should have. Sorry.
Well, we're limiting this to two hours, so 29 minutes to go. And we're almost done.
You got a lot of thumbs up there.
Okay, comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Benavides?
Okay, so in regards to assisted living, which is different than a nursing home. So, you know, I, I think, I think we ought to solicit public comment on, on this particular issue. I, I can't see a lot of downside to it. You know, I think if, it depends on, on the, the size of the yard and how huge it is, you know? People are going to wonder about traffic going in and out perhaps. But it, it seems like, yeah, the, there should be assisted living facilities somewhere in the village, you know? And, you know, boy, we have Airbnbs. I think people would, some, you know, different people are going to feel differently about it. I know that was a contentious topic, but there's going to be people that favor assisted living over Airbnbs, you know? So it's just worthy of consideration.
Who else would like to comment? Commissioner Seavey?
Yeah, there's, if you read the news and look at trends, senior living is, it's going to proliferate in the next several years and it's just going to become more and more common. We're probably going to experience pressure to build facilities or communities in the village. And having these residential, residential scale, I don't know what to call them, facilities is a little cold. But I think it just alleviates some of that impending burden. I'd also be curious, you know, you do mention assisted living. Where does memory care fit into this and would that be a part of this equation?
My understanding of memory care facilities is they have to be pretty secure so that, so the residents can't get out and, you know, get lost.
Some assisted livings, sorry to interrupt, but I, I know that there are some assisted livings that are memory care, assisted living facilities, that are even like small little homes that are exactly what you're talking about. So yeah, I, I think it can be either. I think they normally designate it to be specifically like a memory care one or non. But yeah, I think it can go either way.
They'll sometimes, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, they'll sometimes call it like the continuum, a continuum of care where you, you know, it could be from independent living all the way through memory care and hospice even. So just that, that's something to consider.
Yes, Commissioner Christensen?
Do these fall under any state health requirements? I mean, yeah, I mean, or is it just anybody can open this without licensure? How does that all work?
So Commissioner Christiansen, commissioners, I don't have much context on the, the health and whether or not they need to be licensed from the state. But there are a few assisted living in-home style facilities in the city of Albuquerque. So the concept itself is one that can be done in a residential area and be properly permitted.
Yeah, I, I have a friend whose parents were in a residential assisted living, you know, in a small house setting here in Albuquerque, up in the Northeast Heights. And then her father died and, and her mother moved to a different facility, also in a small home setting. And they are, I'm pretty sure they're highly regulated, you know? They have nursing staff and they're dispensing medications and they're preparing food for the residents. And, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of accommodating them somehow. I, it might even have to be through a zone change. You know, if it can't be a home occupation, it can't be done by variants, it can't be done by a special use permit, what else do we have? So, I'm not, yeah, zone change. Or an amendment to, to the ordinance. Yes, Commissioner Park?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to say just one thing is I think clearly it, it's an issue that deserves and warrants of more investigation and review. I, I think my question, maybe it's for Tiffany, is were we approached about one of these facilities? Is that why this is on the agenda? Or, and the flip side of that is, do we have any of these facilities in the village currently?
So Commissioner Park, commissioners, we, as far as I'm aware, we do not have one of these assisted living facilities in the village. And we definitely don't have them in residential zones, or if they are, they're not permitted through us. We, the reason why this is, that how, is that there is a resident in the village who wants to do something and basically turn their home or buy a home and do this, either for their parents or their relatives' parents specifically. But this, this is something that if it were to be allowed, it wouldn't just be this one case necessarily, but this is the only one that I've heard of. And similar to, I guess, the, the short-term rental conversation, just because we would allow this in theory, doesn't mean the entire community would become this. The market really would be a factor in this, depending on how it was regulated. It could be something that you're only allowed one per block, if it were allowed.
So I guess, Madam Chair, I think I'll just circle back to Commissioner Benavides's points, which is, I think it's definitely something that warrants public input. And I think more investigation, I'd like to know, I'm with you, Madam Chair, I think it's got to be highly regulated. I mean, there's so many areas. I can tell you from personal experience, my grandmother, who's 96, lives in an assisted living facility up off of Paseo and she's in the memory care unit. And, I mean, they're, I mean, like right now, I mean, I haven't seen her in, what, four months, five months? But I mean, it's very, very highly regulated and it does all of that stuff on a larger scale. But I think that with an aging population, and I, I count myself in that soon-to-be-aging population, right? You know, it, it, I mean, it's definitely something that we're going to have to consider. It's, you know, this won't be the first time it comes up.
And Tiffany, I can tell you from personal experience in the litigation field that it is highly regulated. And it's not easy to actually get the certifications that you need to become an assisted living. It's, it's highly regulated. So yeah, I mean, but, but I do believe that public comment is warranted. So those are my thoughts.
That's my comment, too. I think this is really a public comment. Because we're, if, if we're talking about changing that it's going into residential areas and it affects people, other people in the neighborhood. So I think public comment is really important.
Well, I'm hearing a lot of proving opinions or positive vibes. It just needs to be worked out somehow and let's move forward with it. Any other comments? Okay, well, we have finished with our new business and we don't have any reports. And there's only one thing before adjournment, and that is commissioners' informal discussions. So we do have about 15 minutes or so. If you would like to have any informal discussion that we didn't get around to at our regular meeting because we were so late.
I have one, one thing to bring up.
Go for it.
Is there any way that we can keep these meetings to less than four hours? And if, and if there are going to be long meetings, and it seems like these meetings are long, do you think that we can start them earlier than seven o'clock so that we're not ending at 11? I, I mean, it's just, those are just, I'm throwing that out there.
So we're actually, we have a three-hour time limit. And so at our last meeting, I did pause at, I think it was a little past the three hours. And we made a decision as a group to go forward with, I think we had one more public hearing and they had been waiting around for three hours. So, you know, there's kind of a pressure to, to push on.
Yeah.
There are people waiting, but we do have the option of deferring it and either deferring it to the next month or having a special meeting like we scheduled tonight. As far as changing the time, I, yeah, I suppose we could. Tiffany, is there any reason that we couldn't change the time if we all agreed?
Hold on one moment. I'm going to look up the resolutions that were passed at the beginning.
Yeah, there were some resolutions that might.
Because those may, those may be restrictive as to say that you have to start at seven.
Yeah. But, you know, we, we did have the half-hour meeting. I don't know, I don't think you were there, Commissioner Berenson. We had a record short meeting. Really, last week, the last meeting was unusual, you know, to last that long. It doesn't happen that often. I think that's maybe the second time in several years that I've been at a meeting that lasted that long. Commissioner Park?
I think Gil raised it, but I was going to say, I was just putting up two fingers because that's only happened twice in however long I've been on. But, but I'm, I'm with, I'm with Rachel. I mean, when it comes 11, I mean, you're, you're, you're well past my bedtime.
Yeah, it was, it was brutal. It was brutal.
Even 10, I mean, like 10, you know?
Yeah, well, and by the time we got to it, I'll just like, let's just get this done and over with and maybe not given. I mean, I'm not agreeing. It come to a point where we're just like, and that's not fair to anybody.
So I would say, I would say that it was very predictable that it was going to be a long. So I would say, I would say that it was very predictable that it was going to be a long meeting.
Yeah, that was.
We had, what, four applications and they looked like they're, you know, there was, they were, it was pretty thick, right? There's a lot to get through. So we might have done better planning and not done four different things. Because once, once you get people there waiting for you, you do feel an obligation. It's like, oh my gosh, they're, they've been sitting there for three hours waiting for us and just to tell them to go home now, it doesn't seem fair. So maybe with better planning, that would be hopeful.
And commissioners, if I could just interject. So lately, we have been getting many items going before the planning and zoning commission, probably more than we have for the past several years. Usually there's two items, three, this time there were four. So that, that does naturally make things take a little bit longer. I think what also slows down the process is the fact that we are doing an over Zoom. But that is something that we kind of have to deal with at this point. And I will also say that having a busy agenda actually means that there's a lot of activity going on in the village, which is kind of a good thing if you think about it, because then it means that there, there's, or we're becoming more than just a quiet community. We're, we're, people want to do things here.
Yeah, but what I, I think I hear other commissioners saying is, is that with better planning, maybe we have more, more meetings, you know, like, like today's meeting, right? It was just, it's just, we, we got to do it done rather than stay up till 11 o'clock at night and our brains turn mush and maybe we don't give, give them the best.
How's our agenda looking for the coming meeting, Tiffany?
As one of the items, heard, there are four items on the next agenda. One of them was the deferred item from the last meeting.
Oh, right, the one we discussed thoroughly and couldn't come to. Because Commissioner Gay got bumped. He, he could have broken the, the tie for us, but oh well.
Might make us the judge. So the first time that we had our, we had our first meeting on Zoom, we were asked to sign on 15 minutes before the meeting and that way we could work out all the kinks. Last meeting, you know, had a full agenda, storm going on. Crazy. And a lot of people just showed up, you know, me included, right, right beforehand. But if we can just sign on and like work out all the bugs and, you know, be up and running by, at seven, that would help a little bit.
I don't know if it was avoidable, you know? That storm was just kicking everybody off and people were having trouble connecting. Well, maybe the connecting issues could have been alleviated, but, and I'm going to, I'm going to call Commissioner Gay and suggest that he find a place that's got more reliable internet or something because he's had major problems twice in a row now. Gay, are you still there?
Village Hall.
Yeah, I think that the Village Hall could be available and.
Commissioners who do have. Can set up at Village Hall.
Yeah.
Uh, just please let us know in advance.
Yeah.
So Tiffany, what about starting at six? Is there a resolution that says no, no go?
So the resolution is that the meetings start at seven. And in the meantime, it will be starting at seven. If this is something that we, we want, that, that the commission does want to change, we could discuss this at August meeting to say.
Why don't we put that on the agenda as a new business?
Will do.
Ability of changing the resolution.
You know, I, I can see why seven's a good time to start, you know? You get off of, I mean, I'm retired, so it doesn't, it's much, but you get off of work at 4:30, you might get home at 5:00, 5:30, you want to eat dinner before this starts because you don't eat dinner. Maybe eat during the meeting too, I suppose, but, but it, you know, it's just, it, it does make sense to me why we'd start at seven.
Well, we can thoroughly discuss that in our August meeting. Maybe take a vote on it.
I think we really need to think too at the 10 o'clock time period. And I know, I mean, my heart goes out for these people that sat through the whole thing. Is that we just say, because that was brutal, that was so.
It was hard.
It was, it was just brutal. And I mean, I get it because gosh, they sat through that whole time. And I guess there's no way we can limit and say we, we're only going to have like two or three items, new business on our agenda and wait till, you know, the next one's deferred to September. I guess we can't do anything like that. But sometimes it's a, things need to get done. But we really need, I mean, if we have four items again, are we going to be on the call again till after 11?
Well, I'll, I'll try to run a tighter ship. I remember at the beginning of last meeting, I let some, one of the commenters go on and on because I hadn't said, you know, that I was going to limit the time. So I, I will impose more of a strict time on people speaking in favor or against.
It's not you. I'll just say, Lynn, I don't, I don't disagree, I don't think it's you. I mean, we want, I mean, this may be their one opportunity to be heard. So I don't object to having people speak. But I think Commissioner Christiansen's point is, is really pretty valid is that, I don't think, I, I can just, I know, I don't do my best work after 10 p.m. I mean, I, I vaguely remember what it was and it was a nice project, but, and, you know, it's a, because I don't want to delay their project any further. But at the same time, I want to make sure that I can do a, a good and thorough job. So if we need to do a special meeting, I'd be happy to do it, but, but, you know, because I, I think Planner Justice is right. I mean, if things are happening in the village, I want to encourage it and the, the good positive stuff that are happening. Let's encourage that, but, yeah, I just.
Yes. Ms. Seavey, I didn't want you to think that I had thought you weren't conducting the meeting efficiently. I think you did a really great job and I think you're absolutely right. Commissioner Park, we need to let people speak. So I don't think that you let people speak too long or anything. If anything, it gives us more information and helps us make a, I think, better informed decision. So, I mean, I think even, you know, the first part of our agenda where we have people speak that items are off the agenda is we need to let them do that. You just need, I mean, not for hour, but I, I think how you, you ran the meeting last month, month was very well done. I have no.
Previously, in previous years, you know, we've had discussions from time to time about limiting speakers. And I'm not talking about the applicants. I'm talking about people, you know, speaking in favor and against and public comment and so forth. And the, for example, the Board of Trustees limits comments, I think, to two minutes or three minutes. They do that in the city, city council as well. We made a decision a few years ago that we were not going to limit, we were not going to impose limits like that. But we have also, other chairpeople have made a statement at the beginning that, you know, this is a full agenda and we'd like you to limit your comments to two or three minutes. You know, not make it a hard and fast, but just to encourage things to move along. And that, I intend to do that next time. So I'm not going to be a, you know, not going to be hard and fast about it, but I'm going to encourage more efficiency. Okay, all right, we're now at 7:23. Any other comments? Informal discussion. I, I just want to make this one comment about the people applying for variances and how we apply the hardship criteria. I struggle with that every time. And I really think that that part of the code needs to be amended. The way it's written, it's got six factors to consider. There's four in the beginning and it, that comes to a, you know, a full stop with a period. And then there's two, this or that, you know, it's, so maybe at some future meeting when we don't have a whole lot of, of other things on the agenda, we can, we can just chew that over and, and discuss how well people think it's working because I don't think it works real well. I think it's subject to too much kind of fuzzy interpretation. Okay, any other comments or discussion? Okay, next item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Nobody?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Christensen has moved to adjourn and Commissioner Benavides, can I count that as a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:25 p.m. Congratulations, everyone. See you in August.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye.